Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, everyone who have logged on so far to join us in our community conversation this evening. Before we get started with Mr. Testanis, our superintendent's presentation, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Asa, just to walk us through a few of the housekeeping procedures on how tonight is going to work. So, Mr. Asa, do you want to walk us through that?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us. Just so everyone on the line knows, at about 4:30 this afternoon, we had a handful of people registered to speak. There was a sign up if you wanted to speak tonight for two minutes. As of a little while ago, we were up to 38. So, we have quite a few people registered tonight. We are actually not sure if all of the people registered are wanting to talk, or they maybe some of them thought they needed to register just to be on here. But the way it will work is after Mr. Testanis' presentation, Ms. Jacobson will be calling on people in number order. Our IT extraordinary Marco will call out the ending of the phone numbers and send you an unmute request. And if you could respond within 10 seconds, come on and speak. Just say your name and address, and we will get it going. And after two minutes, if you're still going, Ms. Jacobson will kindly ask you to wrap it up. If board members have any comments, they will be able to engage at that point. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mrs. Jacobson and Mr. Testanis.
Okay, thank you so much. So with that, Mr. Testanis, I'm going to turn it over to you now. The next item on our agenda is for superintendent's presentation.
Yes, thank you. Just want to wish everyone a happy new year. Thank you for joining tonight, taking the time to participate. I just want to kind of reiterate a few items that we talked about at the first special meeting prior to the holiday break. I think it's important just to again acknowledge the fact that this is extremely challenging and, you know, a high anxiety time as we discuss the redistricting for the Fairfield Public Schools and the Fairfield Public School community. While the board is charged with taking on this enormous task, I think it's important just for everyone to understand the fact that while it is greatly appreciated that these discussions are happening in open public meetings, which allows for transparency to the public, so that everyone can see the process play out. And I think that's an important thing to stress, that there is a process, and it's going to occur over several months. But to the flip side of that coin, and kind of a double edged sword, having those conversations in public, going through the different scenarios and the different possibilities that exist or could exist, also draws upon and increases some folks' anxiety and concern because they may hinge on certain scenarios or certain things that could impact them. But I think people just need to understand that these discussions need to be had. They need to be very robust. I think the board, if you watched last night's meeting, is really, really concerned about trying to find out what possibilities are not feasible, so we can eliminate those options and really delve deeper into some of the possible scenarios that could work to solve a couple of the issues that we currently have here in our public school system. And with that, I do, we do have some larger documents that are posted to the website. For tonight, I did condense this into some of the highlighted slides that we discussed at the first meeting back in December. And I will share my screen and just give a brief overview so that everyone has the same context as we did in the first meeting. Give me one second. Can everyone see that? Yes? Okay, so as everyone is well aware, we have been cited, and the State Board of Education has provided us with notice that we needed to submit a plan per the racial imbalance law that was enacted on April 1st, 1980, as you can see, and amended on November 29th, 1999 in section 10-226E-2. It clearly states that we need to stay under a certain percentage of students at any given school. In our case, we do have one school, as everyone is well aware, McKinley School, that has exceeded and exceeded pretty significantly the percentage of students that is allowable by state law. As a result of that, we had to submit a plan, which was approved by the State Board of Education on November 2nd, 2022. And part of that plan includes redistricting of the Fairfield Public Schools. Just to get a little bit more in depth, and you can again access this online on the school's website, on the district's website, what goes into determining whether a school is disproportionately out of balance. And in our case here, just to show you, give you a visual, McKinley School currently is approaching almost 29% as of our October 1st reporting of enrollment for the district. And that far exceeds where we need to be in order to be within compliance. As you can see, the other schools are significantly lower. Excuse me, let me go back to that. So this is part of the issue that we need to take into consideration as the board looks at all the different scenarios. But mainly, as you can see in the next slide, you're starting to see that there are some schools in the district that are approaching full capacity, while other schools have significant, are significantly underutilized in terms of the capacity of the school building. So you kind of have a perfect storm, so to speak. You have the state that is asking us to look at disproportionately the number of students at McKinley School. And then at the same time, we have a facilities underutilization in some buildings and an overutilization or approaching maximum capacity at other buildings. So all this being taken into account is really leading the discussion around how the school district will redistrict. Number one, to prevent any disproportionality at other schools or back at the same school later on down the road, but also looking to better utilize and distribute the utilization of our buildings more appropriately so that it can account for any further growth in the town going long term. Excuse me. So again, we do have two larger presentations that get more in depth with achievement scores and such around the racial imbalance. It was more geared toward the McKinley School community as to just explain to them the rationale behind where the state was coming from. And there's also some documents that will be available. I believe we posted them this afternoon. That includes this slide that's currently up on the screen. And these are some of the things that will be incorporated in the board's charge to the demographic consultants over the next couple of months as they look to see what will be the best possible redistricting plan that will serve the needs of the Fairfield Public School community today, tomorrow, and well into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Testanis, for that. With that, we're going to move into the public conversation. Marco, I'm going to allow for you to go ahead and start calling on the participants as they registered in their order. And just as a reminder, you're going to be called in order. Please respond quickly, and that we, you have up to two minutes to present your topic conversation, and then board members are free to respond. Go ahead, Marco. Thank you.
I'm calling on Danielle Gelfand. It's triggered.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, sorry, this is Danielle Gelfand. Am I the right person who's up first?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, hi, sorry. So my name is Danielle Gelfand. I live at 57 Newell Place with my husband George and daughter Colette. We are walkers at our local elementary school, Roger Sherman Elementary, where Colette is in kindergarten. I appreciate all the board is doing and how many layers and nuances there are to figuring out the redistricting plan. You have a challenging task ahead of you. I've spoken to the board about my physical, emotional, and mental health benefit of walking and being part of the neighborhood school and how much it means to my family. Like many Americans, I have struggled with obesity and metabolic issues since I was a kid. Walking, especially as someone who's lived in New York City for years, has helped keep me healthy, not good. When we were looking for a place to raise our daughter outside of New York, Fairfield quickly stood out for its many neighborhood communities and with walkable schools. The healthy lifestyle also made it such an attractive place to live. Frankly, I have never seen so many people walking, jogging, and biking in the burbs in my life, which I didn't know was possible. I always thought that the suburbs meant driving everywhere. I also write and edit consumer health articles for a major New York City hospital. After interviewing hundreds of medical experts, I have learned that being sedentary can have deadly consequences and that walking and incorporating it into your daily life and showing your children how to do so is the greatest free health gift you can give yourself and your family. I also worry about how, as two working parents, we would be able to be as involved in our school community as we are now if we were redistricted. I also worry about the complications of adding bus routes when there is already a massive bus shortage, the environmental impact, and the fiscal impact to the town. But mainly, I worry about taking away a child's opportunity to walk to school if they can. I ask that keeping walkers walking to school be added as guidance for the consultant. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. I don't know if there was a question in there or you were looking for a response. I mean, obviously, open the floor to any board members that have to, would like to say something on that. Otherwise, we can move forward to the next person. But thank you for sharing, coming on and sharing your comment, Danielle. I don't know if any, if board members can just unmute if they want to say anything. If not, Marco, you can go on to the next person.
It's triggered unmute for Sarah Matthews.
Hi, this is Sarah Matthews. I'm from 230 Penfield Road. I have two children at Sherman School. My main comment is to just say that I'm really concerned of this overarching compliance issue at hand. It seems to be a never ending merry go round with the state, which is from a one size fits all outdated approach to every town in the state. It is unfortunate considering that the priority of every educator and person with the power of determining our children's educational futures within the town should be to put learning in the children first. And so this entire predicament seems clearly wrong, as it has been for so many years, clearly. It's sad our state and those who represent us do not recognize this issue as a much larger issue, but I would appreciate our board and our leaders in this town to step up and remember what I just said. Our children are not to check off boxes. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. Marco, go ahead.
Are you guys ready for me?
I didn't hear Marco.
Yes, I had just triggered Sean Hood.
Oh, sorry. Okay, thanks, Marco. Hi, Sean. Go ahead.
Hi, guys. This is Sean Hood from 420 Lally Boulevard. And I am again just making comment on the transparency of the cost for these consultants to be disseminated across the town widely. I don't want this process to penalize the current students and their educational budget. And secondly, I would again push for us making a request to the state that Fairfield's needs are quite pressing with respect to a single site ECC. And that should be a priority prior to redistricting for the sole purpose of a law that might have unintended consequences here in Fairfield. So I would just ask for greater transparency at the cost and also to remember that we should consider Fairfield as a leader in educational standards. And we might be the town that has to push back on a rule that might have unintended consequences. McKinley is a great school. We love our neighborhood schools. And I want to make sure that everyone feels like they are not being pushed to make changes for change's sake. Thanks.
Thank you.
I've just unmuted Jennifer Passack. Jennifer, if you're off mute, Jennifer Passack, please speak up. I've just triggered Frank Sahigan. I'm going to move on to, it's triggered Christina Nardowitz. Sorry.
Hi, this is Christina Nardowitz of 70 Del Dale Road. As a parent of six year old twins in first grade at Osborne Hill School, I'm concerned about the redistricting alternatives in which walkers might be redistricted from their neighborhood schools, which I believe would have a profound negative physical, cognitive, and emotional effect that most importantly affect our children, but extend to the parents, communities, and the town. I can attest to the ways in which our family and walker community has thrived in the past one and a half years. In a 10 minute walk from home to school before even reaching school property, we may see and engage with up to 10 other families. Once on school property while waiting for the doors to open or at dismissal, we may share that bonding experience again with up to 10 to 12 additional families. We share greetings, smiles, chats, well wishes for a great day, afternoon playground dates, concern when ill, weekend holiday travel plans, and in general bond and have developed these walker communities within the school community. This sense of walker community is not unique to Osborne Hill, but is apparent in most of the town's elementary school neighborhoods. These daily bonding moments outside of the hustle and bustle, the hurried morning rush and hectic afternoon schedules provide lasting positive emotional benefits to all involved and strengthen our neighborhoods and communities, which is of course in addition to the obvious physical and mental benefits of a good morning or afternoon walk. Breakfast together, a shared fresh air walk, a chat with the neighborhood family, or a hugging kiss between parent and child outside the school's front door, or at risk of being eradicated in favor of more rushed mornings, missed breakfast in favor of catching a bus, goodbyes at a bus stop, and increased emissions and bus traffic throughout town. Redistricting walkers would have far reaching negative mental and physical effects on our children, families, and neighborhood communities, as well as the town as a whole. Therefore, I ask the Board of Education to require that the consultants keep walkers as walkers in considering redistricting options. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Hi, everyone. My name is Megan Newman. We live at 352 High Ridge Road. And I'll just echo a little bit about the walking as well. We just moved here about a year ago from New York City. And one of the reasons we chose our neighborhood was the close proximity that we are to Jennings Elementary School. We have a kindergartner there, and he is absolutely loving it. And we have met so many amazing people in our school community from walking to and from school. And I just, I think it really needs to be considered, the walking, the walkers, and how that's saving a lot of money in the budget in forms of busing. And so, yeah, I just really, I really value being able to walk to school.
Can I ask a question, Ms. Jacobson?
Sure.
Um, do you choose, are you choosing to walk because you were not provided a bus? Or are you just within that close proximity to school? Excuse me, because I'm tired.
Am I still unmuted?
Yes. So you're still unmuted?
Okay, we don't have the option to bus to school. We are in close proximity to Jennings to walk.
Okay. I mean, I will just state that I'm not really, I'm hoping that the board will look at, you know, keeping families that are walking, walking. I agree with a lot of what has been said in terms of the savings for transportation. You know, busing is, you know, an extra challenge this year with the bus driver shortage. So that will be something that I think I would like the board to discuss further at our next meeting as we finalize the charge. Because I think the points that have been brought up tonight in terms of the cost savings, the benefits to the environment, the benefits to our children, you know, are significant. And I think we're the other conversation. Thank you for dialing in tonight.
And can I just, can I just make a comment here? You know, and I can't speak for the board, but I speak for myself. You know, we've been receiving a tremendous number of emails. And I just, you know, the tone of some of them makes it sound like it, that there's a presumption out there in the public that this board is targeting walkers and intentionally wanting to eliminate walkers. And I just want to say that I don't think in any way that's the case. I think Mrs. Vitale just summed it up well. And again, not speaking for anybody else. But I don't think anyone would ever, when given a situation where we can maintain as many walkers as possible for multiple reasons, that we wouldn't. So I just wanted to stress that, again, we've said this multiple times, we're very early on in this process, and we have not even gotten scenarios to see lines or borders that, once we started to go down a path of us, let's say, a scenario, then the next work is follow up questions, as we discussed last night, and, you know, massaging or manipulating those lines to something that makes sense. So I appreciate and want everybody to know that I'm receiving these emails. While I may not respond to every single one of them, you are being heard. So thank you.
And just to piggyback on that, Ms. Asa, there might be some families that are within walking distance to one school and also potentially walking distance to another school. So that might be something that is being looked at when the consultant reviews the possible redistricting scenarios once we give them a charge. But, you know, we spoke about this in the facilities committee, about trying to, you know, keep our neighborhood schools and keep kids as close to, you know, their, the school in the neighborhood as possible. And appreciate that being able to walk to school is a big part of that. Thank you, Ms. Jacobson.
Sure.
Let me call on Frank Sahigan.
Hello, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Frank Sahigan, 20 Chelsea Street. After listening to last night and seeing, obviously, the ECC is most desirable under one roof and the discussion as well about scenario four about the middle schools, perhaps at Tomlinson. Well, I always support getting input from staff. I don't think in the short period of time, it's going to seemingly come out of left field, and you're not going to get any meaningful thoughtful input on that. It looks like we're going to need all elementary, 11 elementary schools anyway, no matter how we slice it. So respectfully, I ask you to consider the following, just that one of the things Mr. Testanis mentioned. Have perhaps eight of the elementary schools go K to six, which would leave kids from three schools having to transition. Obviously not ideal, but, you know, when you think about some of the other things this could do, it could be really advantageous. And by the way, back in 2010, we had 4,900 kids in the elementary school. And teacher certification goes K to six. Having sixth grade teachers teach two subjects, which, well, they're already doing this year at Woods and Ludlow, science and math, language arts, and social studies. Now, they used to do that, and that could still support the team concept. And as a matter of fact, you'd go from 28 down to 16 teachers and be significant cost savings if we did something like this. We would only need two middle schools. Ludlow and Woods would make the most sense for seventh and eighth grade. And this would address economies of scale for the middle school team, which was what you were trying to really address in scenario four anyway. You'd have to see how the lines ultimately get drawn out, and that should be done first. But assuming that the locations of the schools in Woods, you can get North Stratsfield, Stratsfield, Jennings, McKinley, Burr, Cedar, which would then go on to Ward. And Ludlow can have Dwight, Mill Hill, Riverfield, Sherman, Osborne Hill, and Hollins Hill, and they go on to Ludlow. No changes in the high schools, and then all Woods would get, all Woods goes to Ward, all Ludlow goes to Ludlow. It's much more geographically friendly, eliminates any breaking up of middle school to high school. And then ECC perhaps can perhaps be used in Tomlinson. And perhaps the building could be repurposed as well for something else as well. By the way, there was no mention last night of the Singleton issue in the middle school, which I think is important to give that guidance to the consultants as well. So I think the point is, as much specific guidance that I think we can give to the consultants, we'll get better stuff back and have them work in stages. And I'd like to respectfully submit that scenario as a possibility.
Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Sahigan, always appreciate your out of the box thinking. My initial reaction to that scenario is I don't like the inequity. Having two different elementary models just does not strike me as something that is consistent with the way we normally think about education. I'm certainly willing to give this some more thought, but my initial reaction is not, is not super positive, just to throw that out.
Okay, again, I don't think there's going to be, you know, you have eight, you'd have eight, eight schools that would have good teams. There's so much savings in something like this. I think if anything, you want, what input you'd want to get from middle school teachers or sixth grade teachers is that idea about going to an elementary school from an, from an educational standpoint. Because I understand your concern that way as well. But there's so many other benefits that could be reaped from something like this. And I think it's a much better scenario, an idea than, than having Tomlinson get all sixth grade, by the way.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Alex Augusta. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I live at 247 Holfer Drive with a kindergartner and a fifth grader. I have sort of a statement, and I do have a question. We moved from New York City almost two years ago. I grew up going to private school in Manhattan, started sending my daughter to private school. And I just have to say that I have been so completely blown away by Jennings Elementary, the school, the community, we adore it. We walk there. We, well, I want to walk to Woods, and I would hate to lose that. I know you guys have addressed that. But I sort of wanted to talk more about the idea of closing schools and going down to 10 elementary schools, because it seems like the town has closed schools before only to reopen them. And I really wanted to speak against redoing that to our town and, you know, going down to 10. More Manhattanites want to move to Connecticut. I know this for certain. Nobody wants to put their kid in overcrowded school. And my question really would be, has anyone thought about the challenges of taking this new literacy curriculum, which I strongly believe in, while we are at the same time increasing class sizes? I think that is an important point that I would like you to consider. And I just want to close by saying that our Jennings community is so, so special, and we love it so much, and we welcome any additions to it as we seek to address the state mandated issue. Thank you.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, hi. So first, I just wanted to say that I know that there's sometimes is a perception that closing an elementary school results in larger class sizes, and that is not always the case. You know, it really depends on how many kids are in each grade and the sections and everything like that. That said, I, I have always been very vocal saying that I don't think that we are able to close any of our elementary schools based on the numbers, based on our past history. I've always been very I've always been very leery of that. I think as we've gotten more information, um, enrollment, specialized programming, uh, capacity, everything like that. I, I think, and I don't want to speak for anyone else on the board, but I think more and more of us are leaning towards the idea that it really is not a good idea. That said, I think we all agree that it is important for us to have someone other than the nine of us, who does this for a living, uh, say that and be able to present that. Because even though we might all feel that way, and again, I'm not, I don't know exactly where everyone stands at this point. But even if all nine of us said, no, we really don't think closing an elementary school is a good idea, knowing some of the other facilities challenges and the potential costs of upcoming projects. That is a question that will be asked by the other town bodies who provide funding for any of and all of our programming. So to have professional consultants say, no, you cannot close an elementary school or repurpose an elementary school, I think would be really helpful and powerful as we go to the other town bodies to request funding for the projects that we have in our long range facilities plan.
Can you still hear me?
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Oh, I was just going to follow up and say, I specifically said permanently closed. Cause I know, you know, there may be improvements that have to happen. So I'm against permanently closing. And just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Mrs. Vitale, did you want to respond to that as well? Mrs. Gerber covered a lot of things that I was going to say. And just, um, to make clear that we still have our class size guidelines that are in effect, that regardless of what scenario we ultimately end up choosing, those class size guidelines are going to be, um, you know, still guiding, you know, how students are distributed in our schools. So this talking point that the redistricting is going to mean automatically larger class sizes is just, um, most likely not accurate. I also was very much, um, in favor of the board doing its due diligence and looking at different scenarios for the 10 versus 11 elementary schools. As we've gotten more information over the last, you know, four or five months about the specialized special education programming, some of our future needs, um, some of the potential costs if we chose to mothball a, a school building has made me, um, you know, think that our initial plan of keeping 11 elementary schools is most probably accurate, but agree that we need SLAM to, to really officially answer that question for us. But I, um, again, appreciate you calling and, um, the board's, you know, conversation tonight. Thank you, Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you.
Mr. Asa?
No, anything I said was covered.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you so much, Alexa.
I'm getting Andy Cook.
Hello, uh, Andy Cook, 202 Alden Street. Appreciate, uh, that the board here is dealing with a, a very difficult and generally unpopular topic. I've spoken with a number of parents and, uh, from what I can tell, most folks are really not in favor of it. So I feel the same way. And if my feeling, any changes made should be minimally disruptive. Walkers have been brought up, uh, a bunch tonight. My son's actually a biker, uh, at Sherman School. We live about, uh, three quarters of a mile away. And in some of the draft redistricting plans from, I guess it would be prior to COVID, it would be, he would be had sent to either, um, Riverfield or Mill Hill, which, you know, biking there across, you know, Route one or some big street just wouldn't be possible. So it would certainly be a diminishment of his experience in terms of getting to school. That's my statement. I, I do have a question, which is, I guess, what would the board say to folks who purchased homes, uh, in part due to the elementary school district that they're in? And in some cases, maybe facing a redistricting to a lower performing school as measured by smarter balance assessment proficiency. And those folks are concerned that it could impact, uh, the child's quality of education and potentially the property values of the homes that they're in today.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cook, did you, I didn't make clear, I hear your question.
Yes, and what would the board say to folks who have purchased homes in part due to the elementary school district they're in? And those will now be changed and could potentially be into a lower quality of school as measured by order balance assessment proficiency and could impact the child's education and potentially could impact home values.
Thank you. Sorry for the repeat. Uh, Mrs. Gerber?
Sure.
Yeah, um, you know, I, I don't want to sound like all sunshine and lollipops, but you know, we have 11 really good, unique elementary schools in our town. And certainly if you just look at test scores, you could say that some are quote unquote better or worse than others. Test scores can go up and down from year to year. Um, and there are a lot of intangibles in each school that make them really wonderful communities. When I bought my house, um, we were, uh, my kids' elementary school didn't exist. It was closed. So if we had bought it thinking that we were going to Riverfield, uh, we would have found out that we were not, that we ended up at Osborne Hill, um, which ended up being a wonderful school that my children adored. And I think everyone on this board, uh, a lot of us are at, had children who went through or are still at different elementary schools. And I think we all have things that we can say about the good and the bad in each school, because no public school or no school period is perfect. But I would hesitate to say in Fairfield that if a child is, ends up going from one elementary school to another, that the quality of their education would be severely diminished, um, or significantly diminished. You know, I mean, you can argue about the difficulties that could come from moving from a school that someone is comfortable in to a new school and the difficulties that the back could come from. But I would hesitate to say that a child's educational experience would be negatively impacted, based on the quality of the school and that home values would change. I, I just, I don't see it that way. And, and that's just my opinion. Others may feel differently, but I, in a town like Fairfield, I think we have really 11 wonderful schools that all have a lot of really good things about them. And I would hesitate to say that it would end up in that kind of negativity. So my two cents.
Thank you, Mrs. Gerber. Mrs. Vitale? Um, I agree with everything Mrs. Gerber said. And I don't mean to, uh, you know, all sunshine and roses either, but I think that this board especially is very cognizant of making sure that there is consistency and equity across all of our eleven, 11 elementary schools. We are committed to hiring high quality teachers across the district. Resources, same per pupil allocation for school supplies equally among all 11 elementary schools. And, um, you know, test scores are just one standardized test scores are just one measure. So I would be hesitant to, um, you know, to score a particular school, based just on that. And I think that if you just tune into these meetings, you will hear parents from all 11 elementary schools pretty much say the same thing as you're saying tonight, which is a testament to, um, you know, all of our wonderful staff and teachers, administrators and everybody that really have dedicated their, their lives to making the educational experience in Fairfield, um, challenging, enriching and fun. So, um, that's my response to my take on what happened in terms of your property values. I have more concerns about potential property values when you're looking at the physical space between buildings. You know, renovated schools versus not renovated schools. You know, schools that have air conditioning, the schools that don't. But that's another conversation. Thanks for calling tonight.
I have Lori Algar. Sorry, Lori, I had immunity before.
Hi, Lori Algar, 167 Turney Road. Um, my comment tonight was in support of keeping walkers as walkers, but I understand that based on Mrs. Vitale's and Mr. Asa's comments earlier tonight, that you're hearing the importance of conserving the benefits of walking and avoiding extra costs and the concern to get drivers. So I will decline to read my full statement and instead just thank you for your work and your focus on student outcomes. So thank you.
Thank you.
We have Caitlin Helgavold.
Hi, all. Thank you for handling such a difficult issue and so transparently. I'm Caitlin Helgavold. I live at 82 Coral Drive. And I'm a project manager in real estate by trade. And I'm also a mom of a Jennings kindergartner, where me and my five-year-old walk to school each and every day. And I'm also a minority. So with all those facts, I might as well go on the record saying I prefer red wine over white. So I know a lot of consideration has gone into the cost and you all seem to have a good handle on it. Also, all the Walker comments, I just want to plus one on top of that. There is a new one I want to bring to the front of your mind that may be less obvious. And that's the Fairfield real estate market. In the scenarios where schools are shut down and/or walkability to schools is compromised, we should plan for the case in which the values of homes dip. And housing prices have a ripple effect. So while your home may not necessarily be close to a closed down school, local comps can drive entire neighborhoods down quite drastically and quite quickly. Um, and in turn naturally rent revenues from property taxes will also dip. Then if you overlay the potential of overcrowding schools, which I hear you may not be an issue, but even the perception can move markets. So I'm in New York City transplant and my two biggest criteria in purchasing a home is not uncommon to most. It's quality of schools, which Fairfield has in spades, and the distance from them. I paid a considerable markup for the luxury of walking my kid to Jennings and creating those core memories, specifically at this age. And I'd do it again. And people in Fairfield are willing to pay a premium, both tax dollars and real estate dollars for proximity to their schools. So when this is in jeopardy, I would be mindful of the financial implications. I do want to add, you're hearing this from a person that viscerally understands and cares about the importance of fixing racial imbalances. That problem must be solved, period, full stop. However, when you-
The two minutes is up. I'm so sorry. So if you just wrap up, please. Jeff, did you want to say something?
I, uh, I'm muted. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, sorry, sorry. The two minutes was up. Sorry. Jeff, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, well, just, just briefly to, to one, one thing that was said there. I, I really want the public to remember, we're talking of, this topic of overcrowding comes up. There are some schools that we have that are already crowded. And, and that's part of the problem that I think we need to be thinking about as we look to address the redistricting issue, is that there are schools that have a lot of legroom and there are schools that don't. So I, one of the, one of the things that I've been trying to think about all the time with this redistricting is how do we harmonize experiences across the schools? And, uh, so I just want to, I want to throw that out is that we're not looking at just one school. We're trying to look at the experience of students across the system. And, and currently it's, it's not all under crowded. It's, it's a, it's a variance of experiences.
Um, I'll just, if I wouldn't mind, don't mind, I'm going to piggyback on that, Mr. Peterson, and just say that while we have some that are, you know, over where we would like to see their utilization now, even some that are not necessarily there right now in terms of our enrollment projection and the development happening in certain parts of our town are on par to become as well overcrowded in the near future. So that is also not only the today's, but how do things look, um, across our town and across our schools coming towards us in the future that we are all very mindful of as well. So just wanted to piggyback on that, Mr. Peterson. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you so much for calling in though. Next.
I'll be Jonah Hoffman.
Hi.
I think she is unmuted. We have Jeanette Black.
Guys, can you hear me? Oh, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Donna Hoffman, 2120 Bronson Road. First, I just want to thank all of you for all your hard work, um, that you have been doing and also, um, participating with us at Dwight and being so supportive and open to all of these conversations. We really appreciate it. Um, I know that you have a lot of hard work ahead of you, so, um, maybe foresee with you, I guess. But I just, I have a couple of questions and one comment that I want to say. I know, um, we're hearing a lot about walkers. And I just, um, it's sad, I mean, as a school that we don't have the option to walk. We are fully just a busing school. That these walking families make it seem like our kids that take the bus have less right to the decisions that's being made. And I just want to say that redistricting impacts all kids, whether you're a walker, a biker, a bus rider, um, anything. So I just, I just had to say that because I've heard a lot about walking. And we've been at all the Board of Ed meetings for the past year. And, um, you know, these are the first that have just started to come out now. So I had to feel like I had to say that. And I also know from last night's meeting, you guys talked about, um, that you've been told you plan to have a SLAM use the data that presented back in June. And that they ran three different growth models. And I wanted to know which one you plan to have them use and why. And also if you guys have taken into account kind of the baby boom, the COVID baby boom that's happened. Um, I'm sure you've seen a bunch of articles that have come out. I can send them to you if, if you haven't, which I'm sure you have. But, um, about a lot of them, like Connecticut is one of the highest booms. And that suburbia has, you know, over a 4% growth rate since. And I'm just fearful that, as you know, that that is going to continue to happen. And, um, if we're using past data, that can impact the, um, the numbers when you are doing the redistricting. So anyway, so what plan do you guys use to, what model are you guys planning on using?
One.
I think you guys called it like a media, I couldn't remember the terminology you used last night, but, um, there were three of them, medium, I can't remember.
Yeah. So in the enrollment projections that we received, we, we got new tenure enrollment projections from the consultant at the end of June. Those are available on our website. In those tenure enrollment projections, the consultant provides the board with a low, medium and high model. I will say, you know, in studying those, there isn't a huge number between the three really. So usually they use the medium model as a best fit, but contingent upon certain conditions. So if you continue to see a lot of new in migration, perhaps the high would be more, um, better to utilize. If you continue to see a lot more development happen, that where students are actually, um, enrolling in school from those developments, perhaps high. So that's all in the presentation. I think that it's been stated by board members that we're not the demographers. So that as we end up going into these conversations with them, the consultant will always, you know, is always looking at numbers when they engage with, uh, the work for the board. And will come back with us, um, with the, the, the best scenarios that they think fit for our district. Of course, understanding that nothing is ever an exact science or exactly 100% perfect. So there could always be some variance, but my answer would just be that, A, there's not too much of a difference between the three. And two, that that would be up to the demographer, in my opinion. I mean, someone else might be able to, um, lay in if they have a different idea on that. But, um, that that usually would be the work of the demographer to utilize. Go ahead, Mrs. Vitale. Um, I agree, Ms. Jacobson. I think that we, you know, did have the scenarios. And when the board finalizes the charge and engages SLAM to move forward with this work, I suspect one of the first questions would be, you know, what, has, has things changed in the last eight months? Are you still recommending the medium model? Or do you want to switch to high? And that would be a conversation that could come back to the board. I also think it's important to remember when we're talking about the, eh, planning to 85% capacity. Part of the reason that we do that is to provide some flexible space in a school, that if the projection is off, you know, you have that extra room to account for that. You know, having that little bit of headroom, um, you know, it's a little bit of a safety net both for unanticipated special programming as well as fluctuations, unanticipated fluctuations in projections. Thanks, Donna.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Jacobson, uh, if I could just inter-
Ms. Jacobson, if I could just interject, I believe the previous caller, Caitlin, was on, and she reached her two-minute maximum, but some board members had commented. So I'm going to have Marco unmute her, just to see if she has any quick comments in reference to what was said.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. I think the crux of my question is, I want to make sure that, you know, the public is aware of whatever the housing value implications are going to be under the scenarios of if schools were to be closed down, what is that and what does it look like?
Thank you.
We have Jeanette Black.
Hello, this is Jeanette, 867 Riverside Drive. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi, I'm sorry. Again, I'm a walker, and you're going to hear a lot from our walkers, and I really appreciate the chance to actually speak about this and about our community. You know, our schools are neighborhood schools, and I can't stress enough how important it is to keep our schools neighborhood schools. It has endless benefits to our kids, you know. Walking is good for our minds and our bodies and our health, and you, all that is proven, and we've all talked about a lot. But it also sews the fabric of our community. I have a third-grade daughter, and she walks almost every day, and I get to walk with her only one day a week. But in that one day, I experienced firsthand how all the moms and all the dads, they all come together, and we look out for each other, and we know each other, not through, you know, we all have the same daughter in the same class, or we like the same sport. It's all about a community, and I think that's what Fairfield is really all about. And I think that's why we choose to live here. In 2015 and 2019, I believe that the verbiage in the redistricting guideline principles included that students currently allowed to walk to school should be able to maintain that status, and I hope that that verbiage stays in there. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
We have David Krosnow.
Good evening, David Krosnow, 155 Burr Street. I have a few questions and a comment to start off with. It seems like there's a lot more people on today than last night. So I do want to bring back up a little bit what Mrs. Gerber said about how we all kind of know 11 schools versus 10 is probably going to be the option. Since that is, I do again propose that you do what Christine suggested last night, and run scenario one first to get that out of the way. Once that's out of the way, I think you'll be able to plan a little better, which will bring me to my next question. How do you plan, or figure out to plan for the redistricting or the possible scenarios without considering capital planning, business costs, impact to kids, and funds needed for the budget from the Board of Finance? It seems like there is a lack of preparation and planning. These scenarios will not be divided by budget season, or decided by budget season, but do you plan to ask the town for a redistricting budget, or at least put better placeholders there for other capital projects that may come up in regards to the redistricting decisions and scenarios?
Anyone like to answer? All right, so I'll take a shot at that. So as you know, there is a capital planning working group with the town that's been ongoing for about a year now. We have board members who are a part of that. We last looked at the capital, the waterfall, early fall. We are going to be looking at that again, hopefully, in terms of, you know, getting some clarifications on what is currently on our waterfall, as well as working with the other town bodies. So we are definitely always engaged in terms of looking at what our projects are. This district has been doing that for, you know, a very long time, and trying to look ahead in terms of what the needs are, and also knowing that there's only so much at any given time, given the other town needs as well. So I think that we hear you, and that yes, if there were certain scenarios that came forward that required, you know, some sort of construction project to it, then we would have to consider that, if that was something that seriously that the board wanted to consider doing, if it needed to move something up or move things around the waterfall. So that would always be a part of our conversations, once we get deeper down into something that we think that we're actually going to want to change. And then in terms of the budget, so great, in terms of the budget, David, so just remember that the implementation year for this redistricting is 24, 25. You know, I would think that we would need something in next year if we didn't continue working on this with the consultant and whatnot into the 2023, 24 budget, but really, the implementation year, or at least for right now, that we have approved and given to the state is for the 24, 25 budget, which would not be for another whole year.
A follow-up to that, but the decision to stay with 11 versus 10, I would assume would have some big implications on capital planning moving forward, correct? But why has a decision not been made to do that first and get it out of the way?
At this point, I think that the board has just been, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I understand, I think, what the caller's trying to say, but it, we're giving them the charge, and the scenarios are going to come back. So it's going to come back with the others. So it will be determined at that time. We don't necessarily know, you know, yet, how much time the scenarios are going to take. And I think it was mentioned last night that there's a meeting upcoming with SLAM and the superintendent and Mr. Papa George. I think some of those questions are going to be, you know, how long is it going to take to get the scenarios, depending on how many and whatnot. So I don't think it's really possible to answer that question tonight, but it is something that it sounds like the administration is inquiring about. Thank you.
We have Jennifer Promis.
Hi, this is Jennifer Promis, and we are also walkers at Jennings Elementary, so I won't talk about walking too much, but I do want to talk about the fact that I have a second grader who started at Fairfield when it was the height of COVID. So I can't express enough to you how important not only being a walker has been, attending Jennings, and, but remaining in that school system would mean to my son's mental health. So, you know, his normal kindergarten experience was deprived because of the pandemic and has greatly impacted his learning, social, and emotional skills. And I just can't imagine the effects if he were to switch schools at this point in his career. He's created some of his, you know, lifelong friendships that I can see all the way through high school, but, you know, at this point, if his friends were to go to different schools, it would be detrimental to his social, emotional, and mental health. I do want to ask that the board consider grandfathering in families to their current school, and I don't know if that's something that has been discussed. I know, Mr. Tassani, when you visited Jennings and talked to the PTA, that you were really for this solution. So I know it can be a cost if busing is an issue and too complicated to figure out. So I'd like for, you know, you to also consider families can be grandfathered in if they choose their own transportation. So really, you know, my written statement was more about walking, and that's been covered. So really, I just want to bring up the point about grandfathering into our current feeder pattern, and, you know, how being able to be provided the choice may help resolve some of the financial burden to that.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mr. Asa?
Yeah, I just wanted to make mention, if you weren't able to watch or attend last night's Board of Ed meeting, it should be posted by now. And this topic was actually discussed a bit. So, you know, if and when you have the time, it would be good to reference it. And obviously, this is something that we'll be talking more, especially as we get further down and start to get scenarios, and see how many percentage of kids are impacted and migrate and whatnot. But I just wanted to say that there was some discussion, so it could be helpful if and when you have time to watch that portion of the meeting.
Can I ask one follow-up question to that, which, and you can tell me if it was answered in the video, but I do have a three-year-old who, his first year would be impacted as a kindergartner. So would it be considered, you know, at the family level, you know, I would not want to be bringing my kids to two different schools if I wanted to keep my older son with one, you know, one school, and then be told that my younger son had to go to another school?
Yeah, so if, I'm giving you some homework now, I apologize. But online, if you pull up the agenda in the backup, there is a copy of the first read of the charge, and it specifies the grade levels that were discussed for grandfathering. And then when you watch the video, you can see which ones were, and that is the level of depth that it went into. It wasn't too deep, but there is some information that speaks to the specific grades.
Mrs. Gunsie.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Asa. You covered most of what I was going to jump in to say. Grandfathering is a concern or an interest of mine, and I think the challenge, which is probably obvious, but I'm just going to state it here, the challenge is that we cannot grandfather in everyone because the whole point of part of this, you know, one of our, one of our prongs here is to work on racial imbalance. So obviously, we cannot do that for everyone. So how do we prioritize that? I mean, that's the big question here. So that was what, our conversation really didn't go into the why or the priorities, but at least you can see the grades that seemingly would be receiving the most complications through redistricting, and that's reflected in the backup documentation that Mr. Asa was speaking about. But it's not to minimize the impact on any other grades either. I mean, this is, this is really tricky stuff. So thank you for bringing it up.
We have Alina Malnikov.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Hi, my name is Alina Malnikov. I live at 30 Shady Hill Road. My written statement was actually also focused on the request to please keep walkers as walkers in whatever redistricting plans we ultimately consider. And I know that, you know, based on, excuse me, but based on what I've heard here tonight, it seems like there's pretty clear consensus that everybody recognizes, you know, the obvious mental, physical, and financial benefits from a busing transportation perspective in keeping neighborhood schools and keeping walkers as such. So I guess I just wanted to, you know, reiterate another person, another family that feels very strongly about the benefits of not disrupting walkers. And then my hope is, as we work with the consultants and provide any guardrails for them to keep in mind as they're, you know, drafting up and reviewing and analyzing the various scenarios, that one of the guardrails or requirements that we solidify is that walkers should remain walkers for all of the benefits that it seems like the majority of people, you know, recognize. And we've heard so many parents speak about tonight, excuse me for my voice. Our household is sick right now, so apologies for all the coughing and weird voice, but I hope, I hope, I hope everyone can hear me despite that.
We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Feel better.
Thank you.
Thanks for calling in while not feeling well.
Yeah, no problem. It's an important issue, so it's worth it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Sarah Walker Carpenter.
Hello, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity tonight. For contact, I'm a 16-year resident with twin seven-year-old at NSF. My husband is a lifelong Fairfield resident who went through Stratfield Woods and Ward. We purchased our home in 2006 with a specific purpose of our children attending and becoming part of the NSF community. It was clearly a long-range investment plan for our family and our community. And it's not uncommon to hear that across, you know, Fairfield neighbors, new and old. It goes without saying that I'm grateful for the work that is being performed by the board. I know this is not easy, and the decisions will be very hard. And while I'm respectful of the law, and I am absolutely desiring of a diverse community, the law seems to be outdated. It seems to be poorly written and without real consequence or state support to remedy. Greenwich has had schools out of imbalance since 1999, and our town has been in balance for 16 years. That means that in 2006, when the imbalance was identified, a kindergartner, if they followed a traditional successful path, they graduated from college six months ago. A trade school student from that same class would have already been productive in their career for a few years. So do we have any data that shows how the imbalance caused suffering for the classes of 2017, 18, or 19? You know, there was also some back and forth about the Guiding Principles last night that called out that they were authored in 2015, after numerous community meetings to determine what the Guiding Principles should be. That's aged seven years after a global pandemic and has reshaped our minds, our families, our hearts, our teachers, our students, and our community makeup. To think we can pick up with Guiding Principles in a charge that predate 2020 is irresponsible of the entire community, not everyone. We need to advocate to revisit that. We are in a whole new world with new needs. So I ask that we, you know, consider that because the effects of redistricting will be long-ranging, and I don't know that...
Sorry, Sarah, if you could wrap up. Sorry. If you could wrap up, please. Sorry.
My apologies, jumped again.
Sorry.
Apologies, I had to press, I had to press star six. I'm sorry. I would just ask that we're making sure that we are fighting the right fight, that we're not fighting our own future in Fairfield, and that we are working with the state to see if there are other options, because this just doesn't seem like it's the right course for Fairfield.
Thank you.
We have Jamie Braden.
Hi, this is Jamie Braden. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, thank you. So Jamie Braden, I live at 1859 Mill Plain Road. My husband and I have lived here for 15 years. We have three children who attend Riverfield. We live perhaps a block and a half from school and walk. Having grown up in Lower Manhattan and attending View Nine Nation School through eighth grade, I fully appreciate the benefits of the diverse environment in all facets of elementary and middle school education. But that said, I do have several questions. I actually really want to know if the Board of Ed can provide the parent population a real fact sheet of the consequences. And I don't need to hear social engineering consequences, but what's the financial impact of remaining in the status quo? And I think it would go a long way from the Board of Ed to provide a simple bullet point list of what the potential consequences are, and what are the risks of remaining status quo, and what has happened in the town of Greenwich thus far in regards to the state? Along the lines of transparency, I'd also like to know, how much are we paying for these consultants, and how is this being paid for? I'd also like to get a better sense of how old is the demographic data that we are using alongside this charge that we've given to them with the listed scenarios? Exactly, how old is this demographic data that we're using? Is this 2015, 2016 data? I've seen a lot of, you know, recent percentage marks in a lot of the charts that you've, we've been able to dig through. And finally, I'd like to hear lessons learned when the consultants that we work with, when they make their recommendations. I want to hear real lessons learned from similar school districts of similar size, who have chosen historic...
Two minutes is up, but sorry. Thank you. If you could just finish up really quickly.
Sure. I want to hear lessons learned from other school districts with similar neighborhood school format, and how they have... and how they have overcome a racial imbalance plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wendy Sands. Wendy Sands, it has triggered your unmute again. It's the list of callers.
Sorry, Marco, did you say that was it?
Yes, there's the, at least the list of the current callers that are on the line as we speak.
It's just four alerts to read. That's it. Just the last three.
You're unmuted. Sorry. Did you want to say something, Nick? You're muted now.
Hot mess here, sorry. I was just looking at the list, and while we had 38 callers, a good number of them were able to speak. Some of them, just so the public knows, we didn't answer 38 calls because some people obviously chose not to call in or speak. So I wanted to thank Marco for managing this. And it's, I appreciate all of the IT work behind the scenes, making sure that we got to hear from everybody. So thank you, Marco.
I just open the floor to any board members who wanted to say anything last minute before we say goodbyes. If anyone has anything, feel free to raise your hand. Otherwise, I will just thank everyone for coming in today. We're glad that we were able to offer opportunities for people to share thoughts and ideas with us in person and now virtual. Also, in the backup from last night that Mr. Asa referenced in terms of the charge, there was also a tentative timeline. So if you didn't have a chance to look at that just in terms of the process going forward, in terms of meetings and the process of what we will be engaging in, in our conversations, knowing that there will still be more opportunities at meetings and further conversations in the future as we progress through this process to also lend your thoughts and ideas as we move forward. So with that, I would again, I'll thank Marco as well.
Again, yeah, one, sorry, there's one person, Amanda Campbell, that had registered that now has their hand up. So I didn't know if we wanted to just give one last shot here. I don't want to cut anybody off.
Yeah, sure, within our time, so that's fine.
Yeah, I'm assuming she didn't have a chance to speak already, but I just wanted to bring it up. So Marco, if you want to unmute her.
Yeah, Amanda, I just sent you the unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Hi, apologies. I did register to speak, but I must have missed my cue earlier in the evening. So I wanted to make sure that I was able to share public comment, and I appreciate you indulging me. Last night, I thought was a terrific meeting, and I commend everyone for their transparency and their challenging questions, not only of those providing data, but of each other. I think that's what we need through this process. One thing that really resonated with me was Mrs. Maxine Cannelli's request for data to support what we all think intuitively makes sense. And I'd like to apply that very same charge on the request of all of the folks tonight to retain their walking status. I've been looking for these studies since this process started, and there are many, many of them of the benefits to a child's health, both mental and physical, as well as their academic performance by walking to school. It is proven fact, just today in the Wall Street Journal, there was an article about a journal's American medicine talking about Walkers' exercise and how it improves children's mental health. The facts are there, the data is there. And I share that to say, it should not even be a question in the charge to the consultants that this is something we should preserve. And the reason I think some of us are skittish is because I'm four tenths of a mile from my school. And in one of the last iterations of this process in 2019, my children would have been put on buses. So it's happened, and I think we need to be clear in what we mandate our consultants look at and what the charge is for the guardrails. Because unless we're unequivocal, things sneak through. And if we can all agree the data supports having our children walk to school, we should make sure that we preserve that charge. So thank you for indulging me. I appreciate you listening.
Thanks, Amanda. Glad you were able to get on.
And continuing, we have one more. Sorry. Just want to make sure that people that register and get their chance, since we're still within our time. Nikki, I apologize if I say this wrong. Galius, Marco, could you unmute her?
Just said the unmute.
Am I unmuted?
We can hear you.
Okay, fantastic. Nina Ashley just said everything I wanted to say perfectly. Just reliterating everything she said. Thank you, Nina. You know, being a foreigner, I see the benefits of being a Walker. I have a 16-year-old down to an eight-year-old, and the benefits of walking to school are just huge. And to have that taken away would just be detrimental. So I'm just reliterating everything Nina said. Thanks for answering everything I felt. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more, Mr. Asa?
Nope, just sorry, interacting with my very upset six-year-old. No, I think I don't see any more. And Marco, I think, just checking with you one more time, I think we're good.
Yes, we are all set. Just another audit. We're good.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Marco. And we will see everyone again soon. And just be mindful to stay engaged and email if you, throughout the process. And that's it. Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Do we need to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please. Mr. Peterson, seconded by Mrs. Vitale, all in favor. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, guys. Good night.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Thanks, Marco.
Have a good night, guys.
Close your eyes. The man behind the curtain.